Good afternoon. Welcome to the October 9th, 2025 work session of the Henrico County School Board. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Dr. Cashwell? Oh, Dr. Cashwell's team? Mrs. Coy.
Good afternoon. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you're able, please join us for a moment of silence. That concludes our moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Coy.
Colleagues, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Moved by Mr. Irving. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is to move into closed session. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended pertaining to the request for religious exemption from compulsory attendance that would involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic records concerning individual students.
Moved by Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're now going to move into closed session. We will resume our open meeting at its conclusion. Welcome back. Colleagues, is there a certification of closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in closed meeting.
Moved by Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Irving. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to those who have joined us. The first recommendation is that the school board approve requests for release from compulsory school attendance for student case numbers 25-26-re-6 and 25-26-re-7 based on bona fide religious beliefs, and as always, the names of the students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the request for religious exemption from compulsory attendance for student case number 25-26-re-6 and 26- I'm sorry, 25-26-re-7.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The religious exemptions have been granted.
Thank you. For the next item, the board will receive a presentation of updates to the requested adjustments to attendance zones using newly available current year enrollment figures, and Ms. Rachel Thayer is coming forward to provide that information to the board.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, I will be presenting the board with updated enrollment figures for the standing requested boundary adjustment scenarios that respond to your August 28th requests. Given the board requests for scenarios in August, staff used the most current data available at the time to prepare scenarios for prompt review with an understanding that new data would be available in early October. We are here to take a look at the new enrollment data to provide a new lens to examine the proposed scenarios. As a reminder, school spaces fall within Journey to 2030's focus area of learning environment with the goal of all students and staff learning and working in safe, welcoming, and innovative The division's enrollment count is taken annually on September 30th per guidance issued by the Virginia Department of Education. This ensures each division provides the state with comparable enrollment data. This count is taken by utilizing our student information system, Power School, and it goes through a preliminary review process with the state for accuracy. Then a final version is submitted to VDOE at the end of October, and HCPS releases the official enrollment counts at the November school board meeting. The figures we are discussing today do come from our September 30th count. However, these figures have not gone through that initial review process yet. Any figure we discuss today is still in the preliminary stages, and while they will be close to the final figures that will be released in November, there may be some minor changes seen between now and then. Generally, functional capacity is an estimate of how many students a school can accommodate. The VDOE provides a formula that takes into account the various ways in which rooms are used depending on grade levels and program types. Thus, each year, functional capacity is assessed for each school to account for any changes in programming or number of grade level classrooms or sections. Fluctuations in functional capacity year to year are generally minimal and can occur regardless of the number of total students served in a building. As a reminder, all of our schools are built to operate at 100% functional capacity. However, functional capacity is only one way of assessing a school's capacity for serving the students and programs within it. Many older buildings were not designed with current programs or office spaces in mind. Therefore, we work with school administrators to support the specific needs of their building within the context of their unique physical layouts. Our total enrollment for this school year is 49,008 students. It is important to note that enrollment figures fluctuate throughout the year, which is why VDOE has designated September 30th as a static point in time for all divisions across the state. Comparing September 30th counts between last year and this year, HCPS has decreased by nearly 400 students across K through 12. The division also calculated a total functional capacity of 57,504. This means about 84% of our current capacity is being utilized. This table shows the enrollment of our elementary, middle, and high schools for the last five years. As you can see, enrollment at all three levels has had periods of growth and periods of decline over the last five years. However, one consistent trend has been a steady decline in high school enrollment since the 2022-23 school year. As enrollment numbers are finalized this fall, the board will be provided specifics by school. For today's presentation, we will look at the updated enrollment and capacity figures in the context of the proposed boundary adjustment scenarios. Getting into the scenarios themselves, staff have updated the slides to reflect the removals of the Davis and Hungary Creek scenarios, along with the request to change to the Kwaukasin scenario. Starting with Carver, the functional capacity for Carver has increased by 4.3% from last school year to this current year. This scenario remains unchanged from the September 11th presentation. As you can see here, the left-hand side illustrates the impact of the scenario using the 2024-25 data, and the right side illustrates the impact using 2025-26 data. The change here is fairly minimal. At the middle school level, staff have prepared a new Kwaukasin scenario based on feedback from the September 25th work session. The new Kwaukasin is scheduled to open in the 2027-28 school year with an additional 100 seats. Here's a brief reminder of the areas under consideration. Section 1, seen in the blue stripe area in the bottom center, includes moving students in the Brandon, Deer Lodge, Moreland West, and Sleepy Hollow neighborhoods who are currently zoned for Takahoe Middle into Kwaukasin Middle. Students in Section 2, seen in the orange stripe area near I-64, would move students from Kwaukasin to Takahoe. This includes Andover Hills, Mayland Towns, Pemberton Oaks, and Westbrier. This scenario also moves students living in Section 3, the crossings at Short Pump, from Kwaukasin to Pocahontas Middle. This boundary adjustment is shown in the smaller purple striped area near the top center of the map. Section 4 was removed at request of the board. The subdivisions on the slide are not a comprehensive list of all the impacted neighborhoods involved in this or any of the scenarios. These are simply to provide a general idea of where these sections are. A comprehensive list of all of the subdivisions is available on the HCPS webpage titled Redistricting This slide illustrates the scenario impact using school year 2024 enrollment and a new chart showing impacts of the scenario using this year's updated data. You will know a significant impact to Takahoe Middle in this scenario due to the higher-than-projected enrollment at this particular middle school. Last fall, QMS was at 77%, and this fall, they are at 73%. Last fall, TMS was at 82%, and this year, they are at nearly 90%. As it relates to programs, the 150 CFI seats are consistent in both of these charts. However, there is a numerical change in IB seat balancing between the two charts. This does not reflect a change to programming or fewer students being rebalanced. It does reflect the balancing of IB seats that is now underway that was not underway during the 2024 school year. In the 2025 year data, 25 of the 105 students are currently attending Takahoe Middle and therefore are accounted in the total enrollment of Takahoe Middle. As a reminder, the rebalancing of IB seats at the middle school level slowly moves seats from Moody to Takahoe as new classes of 6th graders enter the program. Each year, additional seats are phased out of Moody IB and into Takahoe IB. The 80 seats accounted for in the chart reflect the total number of IB seats that will shift over the next three years so that the entirety of the shift can be estimated in the scenario. At the request of Chair Shay, I want to share enrollment projections at these schools with the programmatic changes but without the impact of boundary adjustments. In this case, Kwaukasin would be at 78.5% after accounting for current enrollment and the new Center for Innovation seats with no boundary adjustments. Likewise, Takahoe would be at 95.8% after accounting for current enrollment and the additional 80 seats for IB rebalancing. Again, these are estimations at this point of time and are subject to change throughout the year or year to year. As with any school with capacity in the high 90s, HCPS will closely monitor enrollment numbers, but more importantly, will work with school leaders to support the actual needs of students and staff in the building and consider any mid-year or year-to-year adjustments as needed. Moving on to high schools, the functional capacity for Freeman has decreased by 3% from last school year to this current year. This is before ACE Center students are accounted for on day one or day two. This proposed scenario remains unchanged from the September 11th presentation. Section 1, seen in the orange stripe area in the center of the map, includes moving students in the Candlewood, Gateshead, and Pinedale West neighborhoods from Freeman to Godwin. Section 2, seen in the purple stripe area below Section 1, would move students from the Ednum Forest and Cabin Creek areas from Freeman to Godwin. Section 3 is similar to the area shown in the Carver scenario, with the Patterson West neighborhood moving from Freeman to Godwin, as seen in the green stripe area in the lower left of the map. These charts show the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity and a comparison between the estimates using school year 2024 enrollment and school year 2025 enrollment. ACE impacts will be accounted for on the following slide. Freeman is estimated to have a net reduction of 133 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 94%. This is due to the 52-student decrease in enrollment at Freeman from last school year to the current school year. Godwin would have an estimated net gain of 133 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 95%. These are the ACE impacts. The top chart shows the original approximate impacts using school year 2024 data, and the bottom chart shows the impacts using school year 2025 data. On day one, Freeman would be at 88.6%, and on day two, they would be at 90.9%. These are significant drops from the estimations using school year 2024 data. Godwin would be at 91.5% on day one and 91.4% on day two, an increase from the school year 2024 estimations of 84.6 and 84.5. Tucker has experienced a decrease in functional capacity by 1.9% from last school year to this school year. As a reminder, the sections under consideration are Section 1, seen in the light orange stripe area in the center of the map, includes moving students in the Bonnie Bray, Glen Side Woods, and Wister Place neighborhoods from Tucker to Hermitage. Similarly, Section 2, seen in purple, includes moving students from Tucker to Hermitage, including the West Chase Townhomes Development. Section 3, found on the far left of the map in green, includes the crossings at Short Pump moving from Tucker to Godwin. Looking at the impacts, Tucker is estimated to have a net reduction of 306 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 87.2%. This is due to the 37-student decrease in enrollment at Tucker from last year to the current school year. Hermitage would have a net gain of 277 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 96.3%. Godwin would have an estimated net gain of 29 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 89.4%. These capacity estimates reflect only the changes in this Tucker scenario. Moving on to ACE impacts, on day one, Tucker would be at 83.3%, and on day two, they would be at 84.3%. These are drops from the school year 2024 estimations. Hermitage would be at 89.4% on day one and 89.5% on day two. This is in part because Hermitage has the highest number of students enrolled in the ACE Center programs, with 15.3% of the student population participating this school year. Godwin would be at 86.1% on day one and 86% on day two. Finally, we'll review the Henrico scenario. This scenario remains unchanged from the September 11th work session. Section 1, seen in the orange stripe area in the top center of the map, includes moving students from the Chamberlain Farms and Lakeside Terrace neighborhoods from Hermitage to Henrico. Section 2, seen in the lower center of the map in purple, includes moving students from Highland Springs to Henrico, which impacts the Central Gardens and Woodville neighborhoods. Finally, Section 3, found adjacent to Section 2 in green, includes the portion of the fairways development zoned for Highland Springs moving to Henrico. This scenario has Henrico increasing by a net 333 students, with 75 of those students being the seats slated for the new Cybersecurity Specialty Center that is opening in school year 2026-27. Henrico would be an estimated 80.7% functional capacity. Highland Springs would have a net reduction of 61 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 83.1%. Please note that Section 3 now has a student population included in the school year 2025 data, as these residential units are actively being built and sold. The projected number of student yields is maintained at 20 in the Henrico portion of the chart. Hermitage would have an estimated net reduction of 182 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 73%. These capacity estimates reflect only the changes in this Henrico scenario. Moving along to ACE Center impacts for these three schools, Henrico on day one would be at 76.4% and day two would be at 78.9%. These are drops from the school year 2024 estimations due to Henrico's high enrollment decreasing by 49 students this year. Highland Springs would be at 76.8% and 79.3% for day one and day two, respectively. Hermitage would be at 66.2% on day one and 66.3% on day two. This slide provides an overview of the high schools when all three scenarios are implemented simultaneously with the updated school year 2025 data. This chart displays the net changes for each of the six high schools that could be impacted should these scenarios move forward. Two of these schools are impacted by more than one scenario, specifically Godwin and Hermitage, so it is important to note that these figures will not match prior slides for their estimated enrollments or functional capacity percentages. As a review of the overall functional capacities for these schools, before ACE Center students are adjusted for from the capacity, Freeman is estimated at 94%, Godwin is estimated at 96.4%, Henrico is estimated at 80.7%, Hermitage is estimated at 87%, Highland Springs is estimated at 83.1%, and Tucker is estimated at 87.2%. And for the board's convenience, here's a chart displaying the day one and day two estimated functional capacities for all six potentially impacted high schools using the school year 2025-26 preliminary enrollment data. Now that you've seen the overall changes using the new enrollment, staff were asked to show impacts if not all students moved to their newly zoned schools right away. The school board has the ability to determine which grades are allowed to choose to remain at their previously zoned schools. HCPS has traditionally allowed for rising 11th and 12th grade students to choose to remain at their priorly zoned school. For these next three charts, staff were asked to show an approximation on what this would look like should rising 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students be allowed the choice to stay. This chart assumes half of those eligible students remain at their priorly zoned schools. These are only estimations to give a general sense of how this could look if these scenarios are implemented. For the Freeman scenario, there would be an offset of 48 students choosing to remain at Freeman. This brings the estimated functional capacity of Freeman for the first year of implementation down to 96.7%. At Godwin, it is the same offset of 48 students from those choosing to remain at Freeman, bringing Godwin to 92.4% functional capacity. These functional capacities will continue to adjust as more cohorts move into the newly zoned schools. For the Tucker scenario, there would be an estimated offset of 102 students choosing to remain at Tucker between 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. This brings the estimated functional capacity of Tucker for the first year of implementation down to 92.4%. At Hermitage, it is an offset of 93 students from those choosing to remain at Tucker, bringing Hermitage to 91.5% functional capacity for the first year. For Godwin, there's an estimated offset of five students remaining at Tucker, bringing them to 89.2%. For the Henrico scenario, there would be an estimated offset of 90 students choosing to remain at either Hermitage or Highland Springs. This brings the estimated functional capacity of Henrico for the first year of implementation down to 75.9%. For Highland Springs, it is an offset of an estimated 22 students, bringing them to 84.2%. At Hermitage, it is an offset of 68 students from those choosing to remain at Hermitage, bringing that school down to 76.5% functional capacity. Again, these are just estimates based off 50% of eligible students remaining to give a general idea of impacts, as we cannot know exactly what percentage of students may choose to remain or move. You've seen the new scenarios with the new enrollment data and some estimates around expanding high school transition options. I'm happy to answer questions about the data at this time before the board moves to discussion.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thayer. I know you have spent extensive amounts of time with the new membership counts and really appreciate you updating our scenarios for today. I think this is a critical piece as we continue to look at our proposals. So, board members, I think we should tackle this kind of in some pieces, first kind of some discussion amongst us, and then after we have gotten through discussion, we can go through and see where our consensus is for any modifications, et cetera. If we can go to the Kwaukasin Middle School slide, I think it's slide 10 with the new It is very clear, seeing this year's numbers, you know, as Kwaukasin actually decreased from the projection and Takahoe increased from the projection, that this is not a viable solution in terms of Section 1 and Section 2 of the middle school map. I can't intentionally support putting a school over 100%, especially looking at that with 104%. That's just not a sustainable solution for any school or any school community. Even with, and then if we can go to the, I think it's the next slide that looks at the numbers. So, this is the numbers without making any adjustments, correct? Okay, so if we-
Projected with the programmatic seat increases, but it again assumes enrollment would look the same over the next few years, and as we've seen, it could be up or down.
Up and down, yeah. So, this is our best projection, and this gives me pause looking at this as we see, you know, opening a new building at 79% while, you know, neighboring at 96% projected, especially as this week we've heard considerable concerns from the Takahoe Middle School community about some constraints they're feeling now this year at 90%. Rachel, you talked a little bit about the functional capacity algorithm that's used. Does this algorithm include, like, campus building style? For example, Takahoe Middle is an outdoor campus. Is that something that's included in the state algorithm?
VDOE does not include that in the state algorithm. It is based specifically on classroom use.
Okay, so, because I know you talked a little bit about new buildings versus old buildings, and so a traditional campus versus an open campus isn't taken into account in terms of functional capacity. And I know historically, we've kept some of our secondary open campuses kind of intentionally lowered, like when we looked at the original Tucker Building, when Ms. Kinsella and Ms. Atkins and I came onboard before the rebuild, you know, they were considerably lower in their functional capacity because of some of the logistics of having an open camp, secondary open campus with class changes and that sort of thing. So, I need to understand a little bit of how we got here and where we're going in terms of this capacity number. So, Rachel, what's the delta from our projected to our actual?
So, we projected Takahoe Middle to be at 1,197 students, which was about 88.8%. It is an increase of about 15 students from that projection to current year enrollment.
Okay, and, you know, obviously up from last year as well. So, do we know where these extra students are coming from in terms of feeder pattern or neighborhood or development? Is there some trend we see as to where these increases are within that zone?
Part of it is we are seeing specifically in the Takahoe Magisterial District that single-family homes are yielding more students. So, part of that is families moving out of their homes, maybe their children have already graduated, they're selling them to new families. So, we are beginning to see an uptick of students specifically in the Takahoe Magisterial District from single-family homes. We are surprisingly seeing a decrease in students in apartment buildings in the Takahoe Magisterial District specifically.
So, you know, for me, when I look at this capacity and, you know, hearing from our community pretty strongly this week and last week specifically about these numbers, I think we definitely need to dig deeper into the Takahoe Middle School capacity. I pulled some numbers just from previous years to see where we were. It looks like in 2023, it was about at 78%. In 2024, 82%. Now, we're at 90%. So, to me, as not a planning expert, but you, that seems to be suggesting a possible upward trend.
Part of it is older housing stock typically sells for lower so that it's typically more affordable for families, and in Takahoe, we are seeing some of that housing stock begin to age to the point where, while the prices may be higher than other portions of the county, they are starting to fall down. So, that is definitely a portion of it, of housing affordability is shifting within the county. So, that would be one point that I would point to specifically.
Well, and that loops into what you were saying earlier about the single-family homes yielding more with turnover. So, for me, I don't think it's prudent to make any adjustments for Section 1 or Section 2 of this map in December. However, I also don't think as a board, it's responsible for us as we see what is possibly an increasing trend to kind of close our eyes and say, oh, it's just going to be fine. You know, we've seen Freeman just down the road. They've been over 100% capacity for the better part of the last decade, and I don't want that same thing for Takahoe Middle School. So, I would like to see additional information around this as we get to second semester, kind of a second semester check-in. I know it's not the official membership count. I know it's not the official membership count, but kind of a second semester check-in as to what the Tuckahoe Middle enrollment numbers look like. Are we still, you know, trending up kind of mid-year? As well as to understand what the incoming cohorts look like for zoned students, as well as pending development. I know that there's not a lot of pending development kind of in that immediate area. Rise is, is currently building out. We don't, we haven't seen in Rise Phase One huge yields of students, but we have Rise Phase Two building out. I know Reynolds has been approved, but that's a longer timeline, but a significant number of units perhaps in there. So kind of understanding, I believe it's like six phases, eight phases maybe, but Phase One is, my understanding, supposed to be a residential build-out. And so really understanding what the timeline of that looks like and how that could impact as well. And so, anyway, I think, obviously, for me, sections one and two, not a viable solution, but, and not prudent to, to, to move forward with in December. But also as a, as a board, I think in order to be responsible, we need to be looking at this and taking, taking a deeper dive into where these capacity numbers are going. Section three, would you mind going back to section three of the map? So section three of the map is that pink part at the top. Section three is, is kind of independent of section one and section two. Just as a reminder, this is the section of the map that is at Colonial Trail Elementary School, and then currently goes to Kuyakason Middle School and Tucker High School. It's also included, because of that, it's also included in the high school maps for high school change. And so I think that could remain in our consideration here. If it was removed from consideration, we would also need to update the Tucker map with the students moving from Tucker to Godwin. And so, yes. So those are, those are my, my thoughts on the, on the maps to start us off with. But also, I really appreciate you putting forth these estimations for the high school transitions. I think it's really helpful for us to see actual projected numbers by cohorts. I know you had to pick a-
Ms. Thayer, I apologize for interrupting you midstream. I wonder if we could pause as you're giving your thoughts, if other board members may have questions along with your thoughts. Would it be possible to sort of pause before going into transitions?
Excellent, I love that. Let's do that, Ms. Atkins, and how about I, yeah, so how about I go straight to you?
Didn't expect that.
Okay, I'll throw it to you, thanks.
One question that I have that I think would be incredibly helpful is a comprehensive understanding of planning and development for each district. I think about the brand-new Highland Springs, there are things that we can plan for and things that we cannot. However, having a better understanding of projected development inclusive, not separated out, so that we could better understand. I do not know if that's available, but if it is, I think that's something, if board members agree, that, that we could see. Right now, I know it's possible to independently see each district, but it's hard to understand the impacts as they all spill over. I think that would be very helpful, especially when we are having new school buildings built. The second question-
May I just respond to that, just because I want to make sure that you know, you're heard related to what we provide for projected development? So we certainly do work to keep the board apprised as the Board of Supervisors or the county government is approving development or considering development approval, we do weigh in on that. And when we are making projections for each and every school and/or district, those numbers are factored once the development is approved. So while you might not be seeing it unpacked, it is factored into those, so we can work to sort of unpack how we get to those projections for board members, hopefully to provide a little more insight there.
So it's interesting, the numbers we're receiving, it's really on the back end. That makes sense to me because you want to give factual information, but I wonder if we could see what's being proposed. So an example would be, I know in my district, there was a request for the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission gave the recommendation not to move forward. It doesn't mean that it may not go forward, but I also think that just having the insight to help us understand how the future of our areas are changing, that part really would be helpful. So one piece of this is facts. We know the final decision from the Board of Supervisors for planning, but the other part of this is really trying to understand trends for schools. So even though a project doesn't go through, there may be a trend in the types of developments that are coming that could help us assess. An example would be what you just shared around affordable housing. So affordable housing in one district in price range may be different for affordable housing in another district in price range, and if we understand the type of projects that are coming forward in our districts, we may be able to see some trends ahead of time. That is very complex, digested, it's just something for consideration. I think we're at a place where we are going to have to learn what trends look like, not from construction, but from what's being requested in our districts. I don't know if colleagues, if you find it helpful, then I would like for us to move forward. If you don't, then that's not something I would want the division to explore.
Yes, so, so I agree with that. I, I think for me, perhaps even a map with each of the new developments that's been approved and where they are exactly on the map, I think, because I'm a visual person, seeing that may be useful, because we, you know, like Dr. Cashwell said, there's the individual numbers, but I think if they're all kind of put onto a visual, that may be easier to understand. It's like, oh, this school is right here, and this school's right here, and overlay with the elementaries and middle schools, maybe that's useful.
Ms. Consella?
I'm extremely interested in the development conversation. I don't know, when I think about doing this, having watched it and waited for this process for six years, and, and I'm looking at development numbers, I mean, Tuckahoe's just an example of how fast things have changed, because I have questions. I'm like, is that public, is that maybe some of our private school students coming back in, because to Tuckahoe Middle School? And it's not just single-family homes, but back to development, you know, and Glen Allen High School, for example, and my Hungry Creek feeder pattern. I think my pocket was, what, eighty-seven at the high school?
Yes.
Ms. Thayer? It was eighty-seven students. I could not, we couldn't move forward with the pocket because I know, because I've read and followed some of the Planning Commission meetings, that I've still got a hundred and forty-six single-family detached homes, a hundred and fifty townhome units, two hundred and eighty-five apartment units that are going to feed Glen Allen High School's zone. And, and I just support what the board is, what I believe all of us are probably going to support. The ask is understanding development, because when I think about making these decisions, especially the ability to phase in, or let's just use the word grandfather students in these scenarios, the one thing I've heard from families is, let us start at the high school and finish at the high school where we started. And I need to know development, as well as all the other pieces to the puzzle, to be a proactive, I want to be a proactive board member and not a reactive one, because as a parent whose kids, my youngest is now a senior, my kids were not only in overcrowded classes, but they were also in overcrowded schools in my district. And I want to prevent that for as many families as possible. So development is really a missing part of the puzzle, because I know, Ms. Thayer, if, if we're not worried about development, your report says something to the effect of boundary adjustments or temporary capacity won't be needed for the next five years, right? Isn't that kind of the timeline? Or in the next five years, when, when you're recommend, you know, when you're weighing in on a potential project and its impact on schools, aren't you saying, or additional capacity or boundary adjustments will be needed within the next five years, right? Based on impact?
Yes, we look at the functional capacity of the school, and we adjust it for each school. So even if something is a potential for trailer usage or other adjustments at the high school level, but not the middle or elementary, we will break that out and say, well, at the elementary level, for the next five years, this school is not projected to be at or over capacity, but maybe this other school, we need to start looking at modular units, potential other adjustments we can make, and then boundary adjustments if necessary.
Yes, I'd like for the board to definitely receive more information on that so that we can be proactive and not reactive.
Mr. Young, on development?
Yeah, I think the term they've been using for development in my district is Fairfield's on fire. A lot of development is coming, and I don't want the public to think that we don't have knowledge of the development. I think we just are asking for more detailed, put a visual together for us, because I know I have Helios on Chamberlain, I have some townhomes on Wilmer, I think Brook Road Corridor is coming up with tons of townhomes and apartments. So I think it's just a visual will help, but it's not like, I don't want the public to think that we did not know as we go into redistricting. We do know that some things are being built and projects have started and begun, and I think some of those numbers are factored in to the Henrico scenario as well right now. So, but more, the more info, the better. So other board members outside of districts can understand a little bit more about what's going on outside of our district where we live and, you know, move around and drive every single day. So I just wanted to clarify a couple things.
And we do receive those impact reports, you know, from the Planning Commission and whatever passes the Board of Supervisors. I think what I'm hearing from the board is it would be helpful to have them compiled kind of in one place instead of isolated from, you know, each, each month or each couple months. But I, I know the, the vice chair and I have been talking about as we work with our Board of Supervisors counterparts and, and along with the superintendent on how we deepen conversation there, back and forth, as we talk about development, we talk about impact schools, as, as, to see how we can communicate more collaboratively with that. I know you work very closely with the Planning Commission, but to, to ensure it's not just flowing through our planning departments, but as boards that were working collaboratively on that.
Yes, a request heard and understood, and certainly we can work to provide some tools that I think put together the bits and pieces of information that you receive in a way that may be more digestible and helpful to the, the context of these types of conversations. And appreciate the reiteration that, you know, these are certainly known to us, we weigh in on them, we are not decision-makers, we're not a decision-making body on that, but we do weigh in and monitor, you know, as the Board of Supervisors is approving any development related to the potential impact on schools, and then once those are approved, you know, our planner is using formulas as we're projecting enrollment and capacity, and all of that was included in the numbers you received. But to your point, growth can happen rapidly, and certain areas can experience more of it at various times, and so we will work to see if there are some tools we can put together that would assist the board in broadening your, your vision on what's happening in each of your districts and across Henrico County.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Let's circle back to thoughts on our proposals as well. Dr., or, Ms. Atkins, do you want to continue there?
No, I just recognize the, the jump for certain schools and want to better understand the reasoning for that. And I think additional information, I think the development, additional and the layered visual, all those things are going to help with digesting what's the trigger here and what's causing shifts. It could be a shift from one, one district to another district, the impact of ACE as well. So there's several different components, however, the only area for question or ask was the one that I've already shared, so that would be it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Consella?
Specifically, still on the Kuyakason scenario, yes. Let's see. You've already asked about if there was a bubble. I've asked, was maybe, was it, you know, private coming back into public to help us explain it? And then, of course, with the renovating, right, versus buying a new home, especially with mortgage rates where they are now versus maybe where they were. So I do appreciate the answer to that, but something constituents have specifically asked me for regarding this scenario and so much talk about program, whether it's, you know, IB program specifically, not just balancing seats, but I think constituents, especially potentially impacted constituents, would like to know if the IB program could be moved to Kuyakason, since there is a lot of space. I mean, I've, I know four or five years ago, Mrs. Thayer and I asked if IB could be at Kuyakason Middle School, but I think the public needs to hear on the record all the pe, well, at least some of the pieces and parts as to why this isn't as easy as it sounds.
Sure, and certainly anything is possible, so I put that out there first. However, you're right, there, there would be some challenges, so particularly the staff training that's involved with providing the NYPD IB curriculum is extensive, and some staff within that program may also be teaching courses outside the program. So it has some pretty significant, it's not, it's not just a matter of moving students. If you think about the incredible talented staff all across the school, that would somehow be impacted, and what that would mean, whether it would be the upheaval or transferring of staff, the retraining of a, a new staff, and there's time that would be needed for that. IB sites are actually, there's a certification process that's lengthy, so it wouldn't just be as simple as moving students from one school to another in a program as far as the infrastructure of the, the IB programming itself, from the certification and the staffing and those sorts of things. But certainly, if we wanted to examine a long-term plan for something like that, we could certainly explore that.
Thank you for providing more context on that. I just know that's been a hot topic of conversation, right? And then I just want to highlight that based on some of the numbers I've seen over time, it would appear that just with the seat rebalancing, given current enrollment as of September thirtieth, Tuckahoe Middle School is our highest-capacity middle school. Is that correct? Ms. Thayer?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to highlight that. Madam Chair?
Thanks, Mr. Irving?
Yeah, just, just to the, the point about programmatic changes and the moving of IB, I, I've had some questions about that as well. My, my, my big consternation with that would be, that would be somewhat similar to what's happened over time with Tucker, and then has created a situation over time where I think they're facing capacity issues. So I think it's very easy in a vacuum to say, oh, you can just move programming, but when you do that, sometimes you create unintended consequences that are not properly understood in the moment, and I would hate for Kuyakason to, you know, with the new development that's going on, suddenly turn into a situation where they're far over capacity, and then we're right back at the drawing table. So I think it's, you know, sometimes things seem easy when there's no friction in the world, but, you know, when you actually examine it in greater detail, it becomes more challenging. Not to mention all the things that Dr. Cashwell said, like, as, as a teacher, it is a massive undertaking to just switch a program of that nature, like, it does have certain specifications for a reason, and that would be potentially moving teachers on top of kids having to go to a new place that they, they've, they've not been before. So I think it's just highlighting that that's more challenging than I think it, it appears on the surface.
And Mr. Irving, just to for a point of context while, while you're on that point, Dr. Cashwell, approximately how many students, IB students are, slots are there at Tuckahoe if we were talking about moving over? It's in the four, four hundreds?
That sounds right. A staff member may have it handy. Dr. Hughes seems to have the sheet handy, I'll call on her.
I think I remember somewhere around four fifty.
Yes, so in, in year twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, after the complete rebalancing, Tuckahoe Middle would have, sorry, second sheet, year, Tuckahoe Middle would have four hundred and ninety-five IB students.
So, you know, just to add the context, so, to what Mr. Irving is saying, on top of the challenges, Dr. Cashwell is saying it would require wherever that program was to move to empty out considerable amount of capacity to, to take it in. So all things germane to, to that point. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I was going to say that alone would, would take Kuyakason to a hundred percent absent anything else. So it's, it's, you know, I, I understand the impulse to, to think it's, you know, that, that easy, but it's oftentimes more complicated than that.
I would just like to say, that's just a question I've received, I am not requesting it. It's just a question I've heard over and over and over again, and as the board has said, we do, we look at everything we can, especially adjustments to programming, which fall under you, Dr. Cashwell, and your team. That was not an ask, it was just, could- That was not an ask. It was just, could you please explain so constituents can understand?
And they frequently asked question that we were happy to respond to and provide some clarity. We, we also do not recommend that programmatic shift at this time.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I, just talking about the scenario itself, I would just reiterate everything that Chair Shea said. I think, you know, the capacity numbers just don't make it workable. But I do want to monitor Tuckahoe Middle School's capacity as we move forward. And, you know, if changes are needed in the future to reduce capacity there, then we need to, we need to be taking those seriously. I don't think it's something where this is, this per thing per se is off the table, but that we just forget about the school in general. You know, I'd also like us to look at, for Tuckahoe being the highest-capacity middle school, you know, what extra complements look like there and supports, just given the nature of the building. You know, making sure that all spaces of the building are operational. I, I've heard advocacy about cafeterias that they have and just, you know, making sure the quality of life there is, is, is high as it can possibly be, you know, while we're monitoring these trends and figuring out what makes sense in the future. Yeah, that's, that's my only comments about.
Yeah, and I just want to note to your point about making sure schools get what they need and, and that we're monitoring the situation there. I would note that certainly, we see that unexpected fluctuation at Tuckahoe Middle School as we're looking at the numbers at this moment in time. And we monitor regularly our school enrollment. So, you know, there are schools who may see fluctuations up and down from now till the end of this, you know, end of this calendar school year. And we're always monitoring that to make sure that our schools have the right staffing and resources and that we're helping them with space utilization. Because, you know, while we're looking at numbers at a moment in time, it is a dynamic process that's ongoing for staff. So I just want to assure everyone that all schools are being examined in that way and in that context, so.
Yeah, and, and I think Dr. Cashwell made a great point and something that I've had conveyed to me about, by constituents in terms of, you know, the numbers and the numbers not being accurate. I, I think it's, these numbers will never be accurate at any point. We always operate within a tight band of plus or minus. You know, I think about engineering standards and they always allow some variance one way or another. And that's how these numbers should be understood. They are constantly changing. Humans are not, you know, little pegs on a board that just stay there and stay stationary. So we always have to operate with a margin of error when looking at these things. And it's, you know, it's imperfect, but it's, it's how it has to be viewed. And I think that's important context.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Chair Shea. While we're here, I, I would like to say I do support you removing, I guess, this proposal outside of the, I think it's Section 3. But I also want to commend you for trying to get this through. I think it's very important because when I look at this map, it still does not make sense to me. And I'm just going to be honest, this map does not make sense when it comes to feeder patterns and what schools we go to. So I do want to continue to monitor this. And I do commend you for trying to fix feeder patterns, for trying to make maps make sense for everyone. I, I do want to commend you that. And, and I do want to apologize to the Kuyakason Middle School families that have been sort of dragged through this. If we're being honest, they weren't treated fairly. And, you know, we don't have good schools and bad schools in Henrico. We have schools with different stories, different challenges, different strengths. All of our schools are good in Henrico County, but I wanted to add that in. But I do support removing this right now because we've been consistent about not putting any school over 100%. So let's remain consistent. So I do support that 1,000% here today. Thank you.
Mrs. Shea, may I have a redirect? As I listen to all of our, our feedback and processing it, I do support the request. However, I am a bit indifferent because I think this requires more than monitoring. I do think we need to really dive deep into solutions. So as we're monitoring this, perhaps one thing that we could consider is getting an update more often. As these numbers and as these trends and as more information comes available, I am proposing that we do not have to wait, that we get these updates a little bit more frequently, only specifically in this case, because it is the highest capacity. And as more information comes, that we remain abreast of what that information is and not just wait until it all compiles. Whatever that process may look like, Dr. Cashwell, we do not want to overwhelm staff. I want to thank staff in this process as well because just as emotional as it is for our families, this school board, it's the same for our staff who cares deeply as well. So for knowing we have a middle school at the highest capacity to me deserves more conversation, more than monitoring. I'm talking about action, giving us what these updates are as new information surfaces and working through solutions, whether they're temporary or permanent. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. So I'd say we wait for consensus until, like in the end. But it sounds like, right here, if we can, it sounds like we're at a place of consensus with Sections 1 and 2 from this map in order to, to remove them from consideration for a December 18th vote. Is that what I'm hearing, colleagues?
For clarity?
Yeah.
With a school that's pushing capacity with known development coming, the highest-capacity middle school that we have, you're saying continued monitoring in the new year? Like, this is not going away. This is staying on the table. Help me understand for the questions that we will receive.
So Mrs. Cancelo, what, what I'm saying, and it sounds like you and I are aligned, this requires more than monitoring. We need solutions, whether it's temporary or permanent. I don't know what that looks like. I think as we get more information, some of the examples provided thus far has been having the overlay of development on the map with the visual. It could also be as we learn more about trends around the affordable housing, what is that shift? What is that trend? Not in isolation, but across districts. I, I just feel very concerned knowing that we understand that this scenario is not the solution. Let's be clear. But we also understand that monitoring, in my opinion, is helpful. But I think as we get responses from these questions and receive an update, we should be figuring out what's next along the way.
So I just want to be clear, I'm understanding the ask from the board. It's a little fuzzy to me now, but I want to, and I, and maybe it's still working itself out organically. So I'm happy to circle back for clarity. I understand the will to remove this particular redistricting scenario related to Section 1 and 2. I hear you related to continuing to watch the enrollment and capacity at Tuckahoe Middle School. They are higher than expected. They are at 95%. Are you asking for a redistricting proposal for Tuckahoe Middle School? This proposal was not designed to eliminate or relieve capacity at Tuckahoe, but it sounds like that may be the ask. And I just want to understand what I'm bringing back.
If I may, I absolutely would like a, a, something that's going to bring, at least something for the board to consider, given the capacity. And it continues, as Mrs. Shea said, to be in an upward trend and given development in the area. Unless Mrs. Shea feels differently, I mean, it's, it's your, it's your district and, and.
Well, we're tag teaming here with this.
Well, it's interesting because we.
No, I appreciate it.
Where you live and where you go to school, right? So if you two would weigh in, I would appreciate exactly what we're asking.
I think it's, personally, I think it's premature to ask for a specific scenario to relieve capacity at this juncture. I think we need more information. I would like to see second semester numbers to see if it continues to trend up, to, to understand if that kind of action is necessary. I think it's premature right now, especially in this process that, you know, we're more than halfway through. I think adding a, a, a new proposal is, is, is not in the best interest of this community or us as a board as we're trying to target in on some other solutions. So I would like to see Sections 1 and 2 removed from our, our December decision. I would like more information in second semester to see if that time it's warranted to talk about a need for a boundary change for capacity relief. But I'm not, personally, I'm not specifically asking for a scenario at this time for capacity relief. I'm saying that this needs to stay top of conversation with more information with second semester numbers.
So, so I'm going to say what I need to say. This is your district. All of us care about each of our districts. And I am not asking for a proposal. Our proposal is what we put up here on the screen, and that's what we're speaking to. I am saying that it is concerning to watch and monitor. I think it's proactive as information comes, that we learn about it swiftly and as a board, hold ourselves accountable for what we can do. That doesn't look like a proposal today. What that looks like is giving direction to our superintendent so that she is clear on next steps. If that information comes tomorrow, I am asking that we receive it swiftly so that we in our next meetings can address it. However, again, this is your district. How you want to move within it for your area and your communities are up to you, and I will not push.
Okay, Mr. Irving?
I, I would second what Chair Shea said. I think Section 1 and 2 removal, leaving Section 3 for now, and then looking at second semester enrollment numbers and trends and having conversations about them and staying on top of it for, for future action if it, if it's needed. But I think, like you both said, a proposal is not needed at this time. And I think that would just muddy the waters. Because we, we're talking about this proposal, but we do have other ones as well. And I think that those need to stay top of mind as we move forward to a December 18th vote. And those are, those are important moves as well, and I think we shouldn't lose sight of those. But we can, you know, we can walk and chew gum and we can, and we can, well, some people can. But we should, we should look at second semester enrollment numbers and be very mindful of it with the, with the, with the, with the knowing that they are the highest-capacity middle school and that something may need to be done in the future, but that, that decision's not going to be made this, this day right here.
Ms. Cancelo?
I'm, I'm with Ms. Atkins on this. And I realize it's, it's you two have, Mrs. Shea and Mr. Irving, that you serve this district and this community. While this solution may not be the right one, Tuckahoe Middle School's on fire and, and growing, and growing rapidly. And listening, having listened closely in a lot of town hall sessions and just, I have a question about classroom sizes. If we change the capacity of the school, class, class sizes would or would not get smaller because of the way class sizes are done? Because parents basically said how concerned they were about class sizes. So when I see this going over 95%, are class sizes going, going to get better? If we were to do something, would class sizes get smaller?
Not necessarily. Because you're allocating your number of complement or teachers per the students who are actually enrolled.
Right.
And.
Which is why you can have an under-capacity school, but yet oversized classrooms, correct? Or they would feel oversized, but that's based on the complement for DOE, from DOE, correct?
And, and I would note that, yes, absolutely. And so when we're providing staff to our school, we're, schools, we obviously are staffed before the first day of school. We have a number we're targeting based on the number of students we are expecting to arrive at a building. And sometimes, the actual number of students arrive does not match. And so we make adjustments through the first weeks and months of school and sometimes even in the middle of the year. So as I was, you know, stating earlier, this is a dynamic process. We don't look at numbers at one point of time, allocate staff and supports, and then wait till that next point in the year again. It is something we're always doing as a team. For example, your enrollment could be down as an elementary school, but you have more kindergarteners than you expected. And now you need another section of kindergarten. And some school may have fewer kindergarteners than they were expecting, and that requires shifting about and allocating resources. It may be that our staffing projected, again, matches the overall, you know, the number of students who arrive are very similar to what we expected, but there are some specific, unique needs within exceptional education or so on that require us to staff a little different. So it is truly a dynamic process and one that we're monitoring all year long as we work with our administrators to understand what their needs are. And that would be no different for Tuckahoe Middle. So, you know, we're getting the September 30 count as you're getting it. Certainly, you're looking at it today in context of this proposal. We're looking at it and every single school's enrollment and capacity number to understand where we may need to make adjustments programmatically on a staffing perspective, if there may be some space utilization concerns that we need to assist with. So, you know, that's happening at every school outside of this proposal regardless. And certainly, we can continue to update the board, not just on, on Tuckahoe Middle. That's been brought up today because it was part of this redistricting proposal. But, you know, we'll be looking and I'll be providing the board information about where all of our schools fell out in, in regards to membership at September 30 and where they are with capacity. And if there are any other spots that, you know, I recommend we monitor outside of what, what's being tackled here. So certainly, it sounds like a second semester conversation to look at not only Tuckahoe Middle, but any or all schools who weren't part of this proposal that may also have some unexpected enrollment spikes.
And we have, and, Dr. Cashwell, can you?
If I may.
Yeah, what would say, can you remind us when the full membership report? And that's usually tagged with a CIP sometimes?
We usually discuss that in November. So the September 30 count, that's the draw of the data. Then we're making sure we're finalizing the data, cleaning it up. We, we've provided a little early and unofficial here because it's important that it be considered.
Very much appreciated.
In context of this, this boundary adjustment that's being considered. But yes, once that report is finalized for VDEE purposes, we also use that as we begin our CIP discussions in the fall. We'll look at all schools' overall capacity. And to the board's request, looking at revisiting that in the second semester as well and in a more ongoing way, whatever, you know, might suit board members best and maybe layering in that projected development and, and some of those pieces and looking at it a little differently than we have in the past. We have revamped our CIP planning cycle to be a lot more robust over time. And I'm kind of envisioning there may be a way to fold in some of those other pieces you requested with that through November and, and really into the new year. So happy to do that.
I would just like to thank you for addressing class size in general. Whether it was this proposal or any proposal where we're speaking to capacity, I appreciate it being covered in this meeting. So now I can refer to it to explain, right? Class sizes, under-capacity school class sizes aren't necessarily going to be larger, right, because of the DOE and the complement. But having seen a watch report, because I've followed this for years as a, a community member and a board member, we used to have a watch report. At 95%, it was watched. At what point do we stop watching it? And, you know, what percentage perhaps are we going to stop watching and waiting and take action? I'd like clarity maybe around that or at least for us to have a conversation or have some thoughts, share thoughts about how long do we watch and wait? Because we no longer have the watch report.
Well, when we'll provide overall capacity, we do flag all of the schools who are in that range in the high 90s. And we look again to couple that with any known development at that time and make recommendations to the board at that time as to whether redistricting may be warranted or if there are other programmatic changes. So certainly, happy to do that differently or however the board wishes.
Colleagues, do we have consensus that Sections 1 and 2 are not a viable part of this proposal? And to remove those from our December 18th vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I would like, I would like to hear members' thoughts. At what point?
Yeah, this is.
Do we action? I mean, is it 100% since our buildings are built to 100%?
So here's what I know. What I know is the information that's been provided to us. What I know is the information that's been provided to us. And I keep our membership counts for all of our schools and I compare them as, as I look at this data as well. It is complicated because if a school is at, it depends on the goals of the district. It depends on the leadership of the school board member and it depends upon the desires of the community. It is Henrico County Public Schools. You can have a school over capacity and survey the parents and students and say they never want to leave. So you have to pay attention to culture as well. There are so many different layered reasons that we all look at. The general statement of when do we stop watching, I cannot answer that. Or when do we start? I cannot answer that. But here's what I can answer. When I see a school on a very significant trajectory with unexplained reasons, it concerns me. I think it deserves more than monitoring. I said that before. However, you know your district best and to Mrs. Consella's question, when do we move from monitoring to action? Some of that is in policy and is dictated through boundary adjustments. Some of it, we can make shifts and changes through programmatic adjustments. I think it's too general to give you one answer. The only answer that I have for you is on this particular school that I am concerned about on a trajectory that I do not like because I do not have answers on how to provide solutions. Now, what I've heard thus far is that we're going to wait until we have more information. And if that is your desire to wait until more information comes, then from me, that is what we're going to do. My recommendation was to get the answers to those questions that we ask for. And once we get those answers, make a decision on what's next instead of waiting till spring.
Thank you.
Mrs. Consella, does that answer your question?
It does. It does. I appreciate that.
All right. So it's, so we have consensus, I'm looking, I'm looking at Megan. I know she loves for us to be real specific about this. We have consensus to remove sections one and two of this map from the December vote. Okay. Section three remain, I'm looking, section three to remain. Yes, no consensus? Mr. Irving says yes.
Yes.
Okay. Not.
Yes.
So section three remains. I do, I do want to bring up one piece of clarity here that I think is really important. Would you mind going to the Carver map? Okay. So the Carver map, this is Patterson West and two, an area that's going to be developed. It is also in the Freeman map to move to, this is currently, this section right here is currently Mayberry, Tuckahoe Middle School, Freeman High School. Okay. This slide right here, this proposal, this slide right here moves this area from Mayberry to Carver. You will also see, you can stay here, but you will also see in the Freeman map that it moves this area from Freeman to Godwin. Okay? Because the feeder pattern of Carver, for this part of Carver, is Carver, Quiocelyn, Godwin. So because we're removing sections one and two from the map, we need to kind of amend where this proposal is to make sure that this section of Carver, or this section that's moving to Carver will follow Carver's feeder pattern, which is Carver, Quiocelyn, Godwin. So we just need to make sure that we provide clarity because otherwise this section would be the only section from Carver that went to Tuckahoe Middle School.
And if I can reiterate, as I understand it to be, this, this change in elementary zones does have a middle and a high school associated change with it so that they would follow the Carver pattern. The high school piece of that is currently reflected on the Freeman map and would remain there. But because we are moving out sections of the section one of the Q map, the Quiocelyn map, we are going to have to reflect the middle school, associated middle school change with the Carver map. Because that place, that, that piece is remaining. So when you're saying removing section one, all but the piece that affects the Carver
Correct.
Community through the middle school and the high school feeder pattern. So you're maintaining a piece of section one in order to continue to accomplish this.
Yeah. Questions on that?
So it's section one except for this piece, section two removed, and section three remaining.
Correct.
Okay. I understand.
That's great because I'm still confused. Do we have the numbers, does the numbers change significantly because of that or no? No changes.
So for elementary school, it's about nine students. For high school, it is...
Seven, I believe.
Seven students.
There is a middle school.
There's a middle, obviously a middle school piece, but around that number. The biggest piece is, is, is right to the, to right of that. That just got rezoned for development. And so there's going to be a significant number of units built right there. And so really it's moving in, Mayberry tends to be high in number. Obviously, Tuckahoe Middle School's high in number. Obviously Freeman's high in number. And so it's moving that relief over.
So for the part that hasn't been developed yet is what you're speaking to and doesn't currently have students, but it does impact current students while there are a few. I just want to make sure I'm answering your question, which was a good one. Who, who is impacted?
Who's impacted? I'm just confused with the number.
It's nine students at the elementary school level who would shift from Mayberry to Carver as was in the Carver proposal. And then at the middle school level, could you reiterate the number of students who would shift from Tuckahoe to Quiocelyn?
For current year numbers, it is six students.
Okay. Then you have the high school students who are already reflected in the Freeman map shifting to Godwin.
Yes. Those are about seven students.
So it does impact current students.
Yes. So that was all in that section one of the Quiocelyn map. And so when we remove section one, I just want to be clear as a board, we should maintain that small section of section one. Otherwise, we create a very disjointed feeder pattern for that neighborhood.
If you're keeping the Carver scenario, then we would need to address that middle school portion that you currently have addressed otherwise here.
I need to see an updated map.
If consensus is to remove of section one, all but this piece, section two and not section three, we would remake them to reflect that.
I got a thumbs up.
Yes.
Yes.
This is correct.
Yes. Okay. So that, so we'll get an updated map, but that is the consensus of the board.
Understood.
Thank you. All right. Any comments on the other proposals? Because remember, there are other proposals. Any, any comments on the other proposals and then we'll move to transitions. Also, I want to keep track of time. We have a public hearing in eight minutes, but we can pause and restart as needed.
So Chair Shay, I did want to take a moment to specifically address Verena Sandston Highland Springs. I know the community has asked me some questions specifically around why aren't we changing much at Verena High School and some of the other schools? And so I do want to let communities know that I am closely monitoring and engaging this work with intention and, you know, this work includes things like enrollment trends, student growth, staffing needs, resource allocations. And it's not just to understand where we are today, but it is also to understand where we think we're going to be tomorrow. And one of the questions that I got, and I saw a trend in this question, so I want to address, which is how will this serve our students, families, and educators and staff, particularly in Verena Sandston and Highland Springs? Because I've not touched Verena High School and there is a plan for that. I want to also share that right now there are no schools in the Verena District operating above 101% capacity. We have Highland Springs that shifts from 90 to 100. It shifts. But we don't have any schools that are at 101% capacity or more. And some of that planning and so that you understand the approach for us is really strategic. It's really looking at capacity changes when there is new development or a new school built or perhaps if there's some residential or commercial development that could impact this. So I want to give you a quick update, which is we have two elementary schools, which is Baker and Ward. They're right around 90% capacity and I'm going to continue to take a look at those. But at 90%, the goal right now is around increasing successful resources and stability there as well as when we look at our middle schools, both Roff and Elko are right around mid 60% range around capacity. And that does give us an opportunity to enhance or either expand some programmatic options. But again, the goal is around retaining and recruiting experts for us so our students can continue to receive excellence. And then looking ahead, I'm laser focused on development, whether it's residential or commercial, because they both have impacts in our communities. And when it comes to Highland Springs, like I said before, they are between 90 and 100% and they are on track to continue growing. And so that's the reason for the scenario and the collaborative efforts between Mr. Young and I to address that. And then also when we look at Verena High School, they have available capacity which positions it to welcome new families. I'm very intentional with capacity at Verena High School, High School, because I know we have significant development coming. And so those numbers are absolutely going to increase. So timing is important in our district in shifting and moving, whether it's students or building new facilities, along with looking at the programs. We are doing very well in not doing comparisons, but bringing in things that are very, very new. And that's going to position our students, our families, and our communities successfully in the future. So hopefully that gives you some insight into my approach for our district and really only making changes and using new development, using like the scenario in which Mr. Young has presented and using that type of approach and making sure that we are either under or right between 90 and 100% today and moving forward. Thank you, Chair Shay, for giving me the opportunity just to give a bit of context into the decision-making as a leader and how we're moving with growth in our district. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Colleagues, other thoughts, reflections, requests about proposals before we move to transitions?
I have a few. I have a few.
Yes, Ms. Consella? If I interrupt you in three minutes, it's because we have to do our real estate.
I understand. I'll just tee it up.
Yeah, go ahead.
By saying, let me see, what, what slide is Tucker? So while we're reducing, if we can have this slide on capacity, while we're reducing capacity at Tucker, we certainly aren't fixing five middle schools feeding Tucker. Community, you know, it seems that other folks in Henrico have, have the right to have community and feeder pattern and, and so forth. But apparently the solution for Tucker doesn't. So because we're going to break, I just want to say, I'd like to definitely go deeper for Tucker High School because the students and staff deserve it. This has been talked about for years. So I'd like for the board to go deeper. I'm not opposed, however, to the students, actually Dumbarton and Holiday Elementary School students that will read, it's a better K-12 feeder pattern for them to feed into I don't disagree with that because that seems to be the, the only solution on the table that we've shared with the public. And then I will say briefly in regards to whether it's the Tucker High School folks being impacted or the Hermitage High School folks being impacted with Henrico, have not heard enough from the community and I wonder, do they even know these proposals are on the table? And then I still have more.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll pause there in order to do our public hearing, which is agenda item number 9.01. Ms. Watkins, do we need to officially amend the agenda to pause and move forward? Okay. So we're going to pause where we are on item 6.01. Because it is almost 4:30, not because it's 4:30, we're going to move to our legal public hearing to solicit input related to a resolution for sale of real property and retention of a portion of real property state proceeds. Let me start that again. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing to solicit public input related to a resolution for the sale of real property and retention of a portion of real property sales at 7850 Carousel Lane, formerly Mount Vernon Adult Education Center. Today's public hearing is for the sole purpose of soliciting the public's input related to this resolution and the board will be voting on the resolution at today's meeting. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first and then allow anyone who wishes to speak so to do so after we have completed the list. Ms. Burton, do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing? We do not. Those in attendance, is anyone here for the public hearing of the real estate property? Are you sure? All right. Hearing none, seeing none. That concludes our public hearing on real estate. All right. Moving back to item 6.01, Mrs. Consella.
Thank you so much. Where we ended was with communication and there has been not much feedback, like I said, from Tucker, the Tucker folks impacted or the Hermitage folks impacted into Henrico. So I'd like to learn a little bit more about what's been done. And then once again, I just want to highlight, while we are fixing, we have a solution for capacity, reducing capacity. It is not a solution to still have Quiocelyn, Holman, Tuckahoe, Hungry Creek, and Brooklyn Middle School feeding one high school. That is unlike any other high school in Henrico schools. But I would like to know about communication. I would like to know about communication, especially since I know a lot of the, the folks, Dumbarton and Holiday folks, leaving Tucker. So many are multilingual. So I'd like to know about communication.
And so our Parents Square notifications about the process are available to them in the language in which they subscribe to it. So hopefully that hasn't been a barrier to access. We can certainly, you know, I know I shared this previously as the timeline was being developed. It's a busy time of year for families. They're newly involved in a school, getting to know teachers and routines. And so bandwidth is always difficult in communicating other topics and getting everyone's attention. But we can certainly double down, particularly after this meeting. We will send an update out to the community, but particularly targeting these communities that may be impacted by the changes. So we'll continue efforts there and those are available in their language.
I would appreciate that because in the Brooklyn District, since we are in the middle, this is how things have happened to the folks that live in by district. Feeder patterns broken, driving by schools. This is how it's happened. I need my community to know this is happening to them because I want to know how they feel about it.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Atkins?
Thank you, Chair Shay. One question that I do have is I know we are communicating to families. Are we providing guidance to principals as they receive these questions? Are we providing guidance to principals as they receive these questions? And as changes happen, are principals receiving talking notes or guidance to share back with families, or perhaps even students that have questions as well?
Certainly, they've received updates as scenarios have been added or left if it's impacted their community. But we're happy to provide additional information that might be helpful specifically to the principals of students, where students may be impacted. We can certainly double down on those efforts, you know, and have assisted as needed if questions have come up in those communities.
I also think that as those talking points or the guidance that's given, keeping in mind that one family may have students that attend multiple schools, and so that communication is so important to be consistent.
Absolutely, which is one reason why, you know, we looked at a more narrow targeted approach, realizing we were leaving people out that way. So we have communicated to the entire division on this topic regularly, frequently. We have the website dedicated. All families receive the survey, so that we're not leaving anyone out. But certainly, can double down in specific areas as needed.
Thank you. You know, Ms. Cancela, I certainly hear your frustration with feeder patterns. And Mr. Young, I appreciate your acknowledgement as well of the complex feeder patterns. It's kind of where our districts come together, actually, with Tucker and Queakason and all of that, where some of these feeder patterns are really muddy, obviously. You know, I appreciate the division putting together, you know, a preliminary proposal as a solution as we got capacity numbers. Obviously, that became not viable, because it was going to give Tucker one less feeder middle school, but also 50% of their students coming from one middle school together, right? One core. And so, you know, unfortunately, a consequence of not being able to move forward with Sections 1 and 2 is that Tucker will not be able to reduce their feeder patterns or have that community. But as a board, you know, I remain dedicated to looking at this feeder pattern issue. And, you know, I think as we look broadly at programming, at CIP, how can we be strategic in continuing to work on this? Obviously, doing it at the cost of putting a school over 100% capacity, as Mr. Young said, just isn't viable. And so feeder patterns are easy to break, hard to fix. And so it's going to take dedication from us as a board and creativity and continuing to think outside the box and dig into things together. And we have the CIP conversation coming up in a couple months, too, that we can kind of tie in to that as well. I would like to move to transitions. So we've got, again, Sarah, I really appreciate you putting together these transitions. If we could go, I think it's very helpful for us as board members, or for me as a board member, to be able to see the specific numbers that we're actually talking about when we're talking about what grades would transition, and which would have the option to remain where they are. So we've talked that traditionally, that would impact rising 11th and 12th. So to be clear, the rising 11th and 12th are which grades on this slide? Ms. Sarah?
So for the purpose of these estimations, because we can't know rising 9th, that is a very difficult population to pinpoint right now in this process, as we just got our current enrollment numbers. This is just an estimation using current year 10th, 11th, and 12th.
Of students who would be matriculating to the newly zoned school.
Yes.
And assuming half of them go and half of them
Half of them stay.
Remain, choose to remain, if you extended that option. I think that's what you wanted to see, potentially how that would impact capacity generally, given these moves were designed to either alleviate capacity or grow capacity at a high school, if you didn't do it as originally considered, where only 11th and 12th graders would be given consideration, remain, and you extended that to those who would be rising into 10th grade.
So really, we're here for Freeman, we're looking at an estimated delta of 50%, using a 50% utilization.
Yes.
Not 50, sorry, 15 students.
Correct.
Using a 50% utilization. And so when I see that, that 15, that number of 15 students, to me, is not having a significant mathematical impact on the functioning of the school for that one year. However, that's a really significant impact to those 15 students individually. And so as we're looking at, even with extending, extending that to include any students who have started at the high school to be able to finish at the high school, it still, with a 50% utilization estimation, it still gets both Freeman and Tucker under 100% in year one.
Yes.
And then that would improve or continue to decrease for years two and three as well, correct?
Yes.
So for me, I absolutely support this. To me, it is doing what's best by students while also being able to get buildings under 100%. And so I will yield to my colleagues to see how you're feeling on this.
Madam Chair, I've got a couple clarifying questions. Are you saying that if you started high school, you get to remain in high school?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, as we look at transition enrollment, I'm looking at Henrico High specifically, if we can, that number 313 for 9th enrollment, that's not including the Abbey Center or the Center for the Arts?
No.
Okay, so that number ideally would be higher than 313, assuming we have 50 to 75 kids coming in?
Well, I apologize, I did misspeak. So that 313 is our current 9th grade enrollment, which does have IB, and it does have the arts center in it.
It predicts any potential new 9th graders coming in. It would be hard to know exactly how many would be in IB or the various programs there, but it is a similar-sized freshman class to that, which has been traditional.
All right, let's clarify a little bit more. So the 313 is zoned kids, students for Henrico High School?
Or those in a specialty program, those who would be coming in new as 9th graders.
How many 9th grade allotments are there for Abbey?
I will defer to Dr. Hughes.
75.
CFA?
75.
All right, so that's 150.
Correct.
All right, plus another 75 with the cybersecurity. I think that puts us at 225?
I believe so.
All right. So the 454 could be essentially higher.
It could be.
Okay. I just wanted a clarifying question, just trying to figure out what the specialty programs sort of fall in line with when I'm looking at the number of enrollment for our students here. Madam Chow, yield back. I might have another question, but if anyone else had to ask any clarifying questions.
Okay, so these slides on the 23 to 25, this assumes all the high schools' scenarios go through, right?
Yes.
It assumes that, but then, that's just base functional capacity, not day one, day two, right? Okay, just so.
Yes, that's a very
I'm really following. And then, in terms of day one, day two.
It will lower it.
Any ACE impact that you've shown us today, or in these scenarios, includes current ACE programming, yes?
Yes.
Because then, my concern is, as we're looking at all these scenarios and talking about development impact and how, you know, we have capacity, it just may not be where we need it. And the ACE programming that is yet to come is about half a high school.
I believe so, yes.
Right? 900, it's about 900, 1,100 seats. So my specific question, the second floor of ACE, recently, at Business Advisory, and I know the Tech Foundation had the same discussion, have we found the funding to complete the second floor, which is an impact of 400 seats to ACE?
I'm not specifically updated on timelines and funding sources, but progress is well underway, and a good bit of it is thanks to the donations of incredible partners in both the time they're spending with our young people and monetarily, as well as some of our own funding. And again, this was a not-funded project going into the building, but something we're eager to fund because of the programs it offers for our students, and to your point, the additional seats. We anticipate opening those as we've previously advertised. Now, staffing could be a challenge related there, because they are unique specialty programs, but assuming we would have even half of those seats, you will see an ACE impact. You know, what we do know is that ACE enrollment continues steady or to increase. There's a demand for the seats that we do have, and we would anticipate as those new seats come onboard, we'll see. So right now, we know these figures, if we factored in ACE day one, day two, will drop. And by the time we project to this next school year, if new ACE seats are available, there could potentially be a larger impact, is I think what you're aiming towards.
Correct.
And I would confirm.
I just know that the impact ACE Hermitage, completing that building, expanding program, because prior to my service on this board, and Mrs. Shay and Ms. Atkins, Henrico Schools was turning down 1,000 students a year. We weren't meeting the needs. So to hear that, I mean, I know a lot had been donated, but the second floor of ACE Herm had been paused because of the mechanical funding, and we've received lots of donations. And because when I look at the projections, and I realize how much ACE day one, day two really are saving the schools that have been over capacity, Deep Run, 101.3, Freeman, 101.5, Glen Allen, 100.4, Tucker, 102.6, like ACE day one, day two impact, right? It just demonstrates the programmatic impact.
It does. We've adding new specialty centers as well. We had the new environmental center come onboard. We saw students making choices there. We'll have the new cybersecurity program coming onboard. So I think with ACE programming, specialty centers, and while we've seen some inconsistent trends with overall enrollment in Henrico County Public Schools, we have seen that steady decline at the high school level. So I think you can attribute the decline in high school enrollment with the availability of specialty programming, both at ACE and otherwise new opportunities, to really helping us in schools where we had seen, you know, a much tighter fit. So it has certainly been significant.
Thank you for that. I mean, this is, like I said earlier, this is one of the things, at least with transition, if you're there, if you start there, you finish there. And that was one of the most consistent things throughout all the town halls we heard. So that's all I had, Madam Chair.
So Chair Shay, if we could just reiterate that coming from you, so that we are very, very clear on the statement of start there, finish there. I think let's have a discussion, because it is not as simple as that. You know, we have to think about transportation and other pieces to that. So I just want to be very clear with, if you started there, you get to stay there, but there are other factors that is being taken into consideration and discussion.
I would like to see, seeing that you can, we can get under 100% with the option of you start there, stay there, I would like to see we offer that opportunity to students and families. And so it would be great if we could, you know, give our families some direction on that, if we could get to consensus on that. So if we need, what other clarifying questions, colleagues, do you need information on in order to be able to opine yes or no?
Yes, so some of the things that we should have conversations on is transportation. And what are the costs? Are additional resources necessary? And what impacts to students can we project? That's a few at top of mind for me.
So I cannot give you exact figures, but I could tell you that providing transportation for students represented in every one of these high school scenarios, it's a significant number of students, to have the option to remain in the high school they've been attending, even if rezoned, we would not feasibly be able to offer transportation. We could certainly extend the courtesy of staying in that school. You know, certainly, if a student is already being transported there, they're part of a specialty center, whatever, that would remain. I'm talking about students who live in the home zone, who are already attending there in their zone changes. For example, from Hermitage to Henrico, we wouldn't be able to run double buses through every single one of the neighborhoods represented for every one of the high schools in the scope of this scenario, though I certainly do hear the board's support for, it sounds like generally, allowing students to remain. And certainly, you know, the figures support that's very possible.
And Dr. Cashwell, point of clarity, when you're talking about that providing transportation would not be feasible, that regardless if it's 11th and 12th or 10, 11th and 12th, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So typically, if the school division has changed a boundary and the student's boundary changes, I'll use the same example, from Hermitage to Henrico, if they were a 10th or 11th grader who would remain to be a rising 11th and 12th grader, it would be on the assumption that you provide your own transportation.
So extending the ability one year is not changing our transportation ability?
No.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to have that point of clarity, but didn't want to interrupt Ms. Atkins, if you have some additional questions.
No, I just want us to get the conversation started.
Yeah, I have a clarifying question. Dr. Cashwell, what if someone ideally changes their mind and want to go to the zoned school? Let's just use the same example, Herm to Henrico. They decide to stay at Herm next year, but then decide that they want to come to Henrico the following year. What does that scenario look like?
Well, they would be able to do that, because that would be their in their zoned school of attendance, and they would simply transfer to that school.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
But they would, great question, that's exactly what I was thinking. So if they change their mind, right, Herm to Henrico, you said they would, what, just re-enroll at?
Their homeschool.
Okay.
And, you know, and I think that's one of the things we talked about earlier in this process, is, you know, trying to predict what would it look like if you offer this extended window. And, you know, we kind of give you a snapshot at a year's point, but to your point, you know, that's going to then fluctuate at the giving and sending schools, if you will, a bit in those first years, because some students may avail themselves one year or both years, depending on if they're, depending on what grade level they're in. They may choose to remain the whole time or part of the time, but we wouldn't preclude someone. If you opted to stay, you wouldn't be locked into that until graduation. Your homeschool attendance zone would still be available to you.
I think it's also important to point out the opposite, where I do believe that if you choose to go to, then you have to stay, yes.
Correct. You would have to then apply for a variance in which other factors would need to be true in order to attend a school outside of your home zone. This would be the board approving that unique case in which students would remain because their attendance boundary changed. That would be the reason. And so that reason would only apply for the time in which that applied and not beyond that.
Yeah, so then I would, you know, just reiterate my support for all current high schoolers who would like to stay, have the ability to, but that, you know, providing transportation to those folks would not be feasible. It would be even less so feasible extending that down to all high schoolers, rather than just rising juniors and seniors.
Anybody else need clarifying questions or would like to opine? So Mr. Irving and I support extending the ability, if you have started at the high school, to have the option to finish at the high school. Other members?
I support that, as long as capacity is not an issue, which as shown today, doesn't seem to be. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Atkins?
Absolutely.
Mr. Young?
I support.
Fantastic, colleagues. So it sounds like we have support, unanimous support, in order to offer students who have impacted areas, who have started at the high school, the opportunity to finish at the high school, provided they can high school, provided they can, they would need to provide their own transportation.
And for clarity, it's also 5th and 8th as well.
Yes, we're not forgetting that.
But I just wanted to reiterate that that was, yes, but I don't think that's under contention.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Dr. Heschel, do you need any more clarity on that item?
No, I think I'm clear. So for the high schools, rising 9th graders would attend their newly zoned high school. Others who have been attending a high school may opt to remain without transportation provided by the division. And for the middle school and elementary, you continue with the traditional 5-8 transition years, 5-8.
Yes.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, one more question that came to my
Love it, bring it on.
When it comes to truancy, with children that are going to other schools that are, that we don't provide transportation for, what would we do as a division? Would we require them to go to the home school at that point?
That's a really good question and a real life example. And so students who find themselves in a position where they are having truancy meetings or there are attendance concerns that appear that it's due to the fact that they can't ride a bus to school, would be asked to attend where they can have regular transportation. We want our students to be present in school to learn each and every day.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've covered everything of adjustments for this go around with this information, but colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong. Ms. Sarah, I think you got all your standing minutes for the day. We really appreciate your work on these numbers, your expertise to be able to ask questions. Colleagues, thank you for working through those things. I know we made some asks of you coming up in the, you know, coming up for continued conversation, so thank you, thank you, everyone. Anything else on this topic? Great, glad to hear. Next item. I think that's all, is that all from you, Dr. Cashwell?
That is.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is items 7.01 through 7.08. Colleagues, are there any of these items that you would like to separate out for questions, discussions, separate vote? Hearing none, I would like to look, I'd like an approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the school board accept, adopt, approve, and/or award items 7.01 through 7.08 on the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor say aye?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Who would like to second that?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Young, for seconding that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is public forum. There are written public comments for this work session. They are posted in board docs. Additionally, each board member receives them before the meeting. Thank you for compiling those, Ms. Burton. Next item on the agenda was actually the public hearing. We did it 4:30, so that is completed. The next item on the agenda is just a separate action item on that public hearing item, so the approval of the sale of the real estate property. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board adopt the superintendent's recommendation approving the resolution for the sale of property located at 7850 Carousel Lane, the former Mount Vernon Adult Education Center, and the retention of a portion of the sales proceeds.
Moved by Mr. Irving, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cincella. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the sale has been approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, any unfinished business? All right, hearing none, I just want to give just one little shout out. I brought, I brought a souvenir. Godwin, for the next, I believe, two weeks, is hosting some students from Germany. It's part of an exchange program where the students are coming in to kind of learn what school looks like in America and living with host families. Mr. Rogish, Ms. Roundtree, and I were able to have breakfast with them yesterday ahead of the convocation to talk to our Godwin students and the exchange students about the experience. And then they gifted a piece of ceramics to the school board and Henrico to say thank you. All right, any new business, colleagues?
Mrs. Shay, I have a few. First, I just don't, I want to make sure we don't miss the excitement. I want to share that Highland Springs High School Theater is presenting Talent Show and Murder at the Haunted House. Ooh. So these are two unforgettable shows, and if you are interested, please visit Highland Springs High School website or contact the school. Also, I want to personally thank our school resource officers, our administrative teams, the leadership team, just want to say thank you. Thank you for excelling at keeping us safe. Also, I want to share a message, really for all families, but I have been receiving requests individually. So as we approach another day of impacts, furloughed employees and some of the changes that some families have to make because of that, if you need assistance, food, housing assistance, or help with some of the senior fees, we want our seniors to go across the stage. If you need help with some of that, there are resources available. Reach out, whether it's to HCPS administrative team, we have an outstanding family and community engagement team. There are community partners as well that are here and want to help, so please, please ask so that you can get the help and resources that are available. Chair Shay, that is all.
Thank you so much. Anything else, colleagues? And sorry for my excitement about the ceramics that I put in unfinished business instead of new business.
Listen, excitement is excitement. I think that's outstanding.
All right, hearing none, our next item on the agenda is announcement of meeting dates. Our next meetings are on October 23rd, and there's a lot, so listen up. We, at 3:00 PM, we have a work session here in Newbridge. At 6:30, we'll have a month, our monthly meeting, our typical monthly meeting. At 7:00 PM, there will be a public hearing on redistricting. So all of that is on Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, here at Newbridge. The meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.